As well as the zoning ordinance.
So the action item would be to proceed with the request.
Proceed with the action.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to proceed with the annexation. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have, under petitions, a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation on a request to rezone 507 Jenkins Street from R2 Residential to OIR, Office Institutional Residential.
Mr. Costello, give this report.
Mayor and Council, a .3 acre parcel located at 507 Jenkins Street currently has a residential zoning designation of R2. A request has been made that this property be rezoned to OIR1, which is Office Residential and Institutional. On February the 8th, the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals met and recommended that this rezoning request be approved. If it is your pleasure, I would respectfully request that this proposed rezoning be set for a public hearing on Tuesday, February the 23rd, 2011.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to call for a public hearing. Any discussion?
Yes, discussion.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we're clear that I will approve this. I like this idea, but we need a sidewalk on Jenkins Street.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So I just want to make-
We have noted that.
We reached out to Chris Prather this afternoon. He's going to go over and look at that and give me a cost estimate on what that would be, put that sidewalk through there.
And-
And I'll bring that back.
You'll bring that back at a future date.
Yeah.
Before we act on this, just to confirm, we can meet their publication requirement for the 23rd of February?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. The Jenkins Street advertisement was published in a local newspaper on February the 5th, and signs were posted on the property on February the 8th, so that we'll be able to meet both of the requirements.
Is that's okay for us to publish before we call?
I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
I mean, customarily, we publish after y'all call for the public hearing.
Right.
But we haven't discussed that with Mark, so but we'll look at it and make sure that it either works, if not, we'll bring it back to you.
Well, so the problem with that will be if it doesn't work, then we're going to have to push it off for yet another month.
March the 9th.
So should we just go ahead and?
Oh, certainly call for it.
You're okay with us going ahead and calling for the public hearing?
Sure.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Mr. Costello, may I ask, this was a lot that previously had a house on it?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And a parking lot or just a house?
It previously just had a house on it, sir.
Okay. But you mentioned, I think in our morning meeting, that it was already paved as a parking lot.
That is correct. The owner of 505 Jenkins Street also owns the property at 507 Jenkins Street. They've already put a parking lot on 507 prior to the rezoning request being made.
So you just wonder why does it need to be rezoned at all? Is there-
For a parking lot, it's not a primary use in an OIR. It's an accessory use, so he's going to have to have the rezoning and then combine both parcels.
Why couldn't they have just left it like it was?
In a- that property at 507 Jenkins Street is currently zoned as R2, which would prohibit the parking lot.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to call for public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation on a request to rezone 508 Greenville Street from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C3 General Commercial with R3 usage in conjunction with a special use permit. Mr. Costello?
A .7 acre parcel located at 508 Greenville Street currently has a zoning designation of Neighborhood Commercial. A request has been made that this property be rezoned to General Commercial with R3 Residential usage. A special use permit has also been filed as part of this rezoning request in order for a group residential facility to be operated at this location. On Monday, February the 8th, 2021, the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals met and recommended that this parcel be rezoned as General Commercial with R3 usage. If it is your pleasure, I would respectfully request that this proposed rezoning and corresponding special use permit request be set for a public hearing.
Move for public hearing.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second for a public hearing, and again, for February 23rd? Is that the-
That is correct.
Which you advertised for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So we've got a motion and a second to call for a public hearing on February 23rd. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Costello.
Thank you.
Um, under reports, do any council members have anything to report tonight?
Nor for.
Okay. Anybody? All right, we'll move on.
I have a report.
Yes, sir.
I want to say that it was a fantastic time this past Saturday, picking up trash with the community, and I encourage all of you, if you can, participate in it. We have a great time doing a very noble service. Also, afterwards, I had the- I was tired and I was cold. I had the displeasure of driving up Mitchell Street to an area in which we had cleaned up once upon a time, over there by some apartments, and they had dumped entire bedroom set, kitchen set, over the fence of this apartment complex. And we need to start taking illegal dumping in this community extremely serious. I am not looking for warnings. I am actually looking for fines, and I'd like the city staff to take this challenge on, you know, with the police department, because one of two things is going to happen. Maximum fine is $1,000, or, you know, so either our coffers are going to increase or our streets are going to start getting cleaner. We need to pick one side of the fence and we need to go with it. So I'm really adamant about, we've got people taking the time out of their day, of their Saturday, people who have worked hard all week to pick up trash and to have illegal dumping operations take place in the city is just not going to be tolerated anymore. I'm tired of it.
Well, that's a good idea. You know, I think this is a very great idea. I personally have never seen anyone illegally dumping. It's maybe the time of day that they do it, and they usually pick some obscure time like, you know, dawn or pre-dawn.
Yeah, it's funny. It's funny you should say that, because I've gone to two illegal dump sites, and both times, we found actually ID. People have, whether you leave something down inside your sofa that identifies who you were, a receipt with your name on it, or something of that nature. We found a driver's license one time. So it's not like it's impossible to find out who's doing it. A lot of times, if you look close enough, they really just don't care whether you know or not.
This particular site is right on the back of a park.
Right.
It's those people who are just dumping it over the fence.
I mean, there was actually a piece, there was actually a piece of bedroom set that was straddling the fence, just hanging up there in bushes, you know? So it's not like you don't know who's doing it.
So, as we have said in other contexts, when you see something, say something, right? So if anybody sees an illegal dump site or sees trash being distributed, it's very important to report that, and so perhaps we can, through the communications office, we can put out KD, the sort of non-emergency number, because I know we don't want to flood 911 with calls necessarily, but flood, you know, put out the non-emergency number and make sure that those are getting routed to code enforcement so that they can do follow-up investigations and encourage people to report illegal dumping activity. I think that's a wise thing, and perhaps, Ms. Kelsey, I'm looking, you know, just if you'll communicate to the code enforcement staff that this is a priority for the council. It certainly is a priority. We spend a lot of time and resources picking up trash all over the community, and so I think we need to make sure that we are doing everything we can on both the cleanup and enforcement side. So, thank you for raising that issue, Councilman Gaskin. Okay, any other council members? City manager report, Ms. Kelsey.
I have a few, Mayor. The financial statements for January, as well as the payment of bills over $2,000, are attached to your agenda materials. I don't have any particular comments at this time. We'll be gearing up at the end of the month to start our new budget, so it's hard to believe that time rolls around so quickly.
Any questions for the city manager about the financials or the bills?
Um, before we go into the police department annual report, I'll just briefly skip over to our discussion this morning about our square and replacing aging lighting fixtures in our fountain with new LED lights, so that we'll be able to display color lights as we used to do apparently many years ago, back in the 50s. So staff would recommend to-
That was the 80s, wasn't it, Dr. Edmondson? The 80s, wasn't it?
So staff would recommend approval to move forward with this project, has a budget of $310,000, which we would take from SWAS funds.
Okay. Recommendation from the city manager to proceed with the fountain lighting is their motion.
Motion to move forward.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the fountain lighting project. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously.
And now I'll turn it over to Chief Jack Moore to give his annual report.
Thank you. I think you all have a copy, and I'll just go through and hit some of the highlights. If you go to the page two, as a result of the community outreach and various community initiatives, police department was recognized in July for the Curtis Clung Award as a finalist, which selected, I think, candidates from a variety of jurisdictions throughout the state, and that award was bestowed upon us in, what, late July or early August for that award, which was presented at the chief's meeting in Savannah. As you well know, we've had to modify our processes and response as a result of COVID, and I tried to get the numbers. We can't, we stopped tracking them, I think, in January, citywide, but for the calendar year last year, we had almost two dozen of our employees that were affected by COVID or were quarantined at one time or another. We were very fortunate in that those experiences were staggered, and so the impact as it related to being able to manage shift and also ensure that we had adequate detectives and investigators that were not seriously impaired. We did have one homicide where the lieutenant and sergeant were the only two that were able to respond, and myself, because of either COVID or quarantine. We're looking forward to this year and the fact that I think about 30% of the agency has sought inoculation, and both for the initial and for the follow-up. As that opportunity comes around, I'm hopeful that we'll see more participate. Community-wise, we had the National Faith in Blue event, which brought-
Chief, if I could stop you for just a second, I think the council needs to hear that, and I think the community needs to hear that, so we only have had 30% participation of our public safety officers, our police officers, police officers with the vaccination, even though they're all eligible.
Correct.
Right? I heard today from the CEO of Wellstar, Dr. Gore, that the rate at Wellstar had only been about 40% of those who were eligible to receive the vaccine, had actually received the vaccine. So, you know, we're hearing a lot of discussion about vaccination and people trying to get it, and I know Dr. Edmondson has addressed the need for the availability, but I will just express that it's frustrating to me that people who are eligible for the vaccine are not choosing, for whatever reason, are not choosing to take the vaccine. I think that is going to be the only thing that's going to stop the spread of COVID and get us back to some sense of normalcy, is to have widespread vaccination. And I only say that as an individual. I'm not saying that as a medical professional, or certainly as mayor, but it is very frustrating to me to hear those kind of statistics and the kind of resistance. Dr. Edmondson, would you?
I totally agree.
You've been an advocate for people to take the vaccine, and it's been, I don't want to get us off track.
I just have to chime in on that, too. I mean, I'm 100% with y'all on that. I don't understand it. I don't understand it at all. I have people, patients, coming to me saying, "What do you think about this? Should I take this?" Absolutely, absolutely. I'm just jumping up and down. Yes, yes, yes. I mean, this is the only thing that's going to get us to that point, so I don't know. I mean, all we can do is encourage people to do this. We've, I think we had, despite that percentage, we've had something like 700 or 800 people who have been vaccinated in the medical facility, Wellstar and employees, and very few even mild reactions. I mean, it's just been, the experience has been overwhelmingly positive, so I just hope we can continue to emphasize that to people and help them understand that we'd all be a lot better off if everybody would take this.
The sense of frustration that, you know, I have is that these are folks that are at high risk and, you know, necessarily work very close together, and so, yeah, we've in a variety of ways tried to encourage folks to take it. The other thing that's frustrating is I read around, you know, the incidents around the country and indeed in Georgia, where they're not getting the kind of participation that they expect or want from first responders, and so they have access vaccine, and they're trying to get it to people and then being penalized for that effort, and so I don't know what the solution is. I think, you know, we have to keep talking about it and keep encouraging folks to participate.
Didn't mean to distract, but it just, that just struck me as a difficult point of information.
Of course, you all recall that we had the bollap demonstration, and that is another instance of, you know, the less lethal tools in our kit. Moving on to some of the operations, next page four, Office Professional Standards, which is responsible for our audits, our proactive reviews, and also handling complaints and internal investigations. The reviews that they do specifically relate to those critical tasks such as use of force and pursuits. The numbers here reflect the use of force, and this number of 38 is a consequence of 2,675 arrests. Of those 38 instances, 21 involved some sort of takedown or hands and arms, and then the balance of 17, eight TASER deployments, 5 OC, and then individually, one firearm, K9 bite, bollap, and restraint device. If you go onto the next page, you'll see the response to aggression summary, where it details the use of force incidents, and then injuries to suspects and officers. In 2020, we had the 38 incidents that resulted in one injury to a suspect for an overall application of force, and 1.42% of those cases in which there was a physical arrest. Citizen complaint-wise, 2020 saw 63 complaints, and we categorize anything from somebody unhappy with a rec report to a complaint of use of force. Of those 63, there was 18 where we found that the performance or the behavior of the officer was inconsistent with our standard for a total finding of 28% of those cases, which I attribute to the robust process that we have of reviewing these, and of course, the fact that we have body worn cameras making gathering the facts fairly easy and straightforward. Next page talks to uniform patrol operations, specifically enforcement as it relates to a breakdown of the nature and type of arrests. Also in patrol are some of our important enforcement initiatives, and in addition, our alternatives to enforcement, and also trauma-informed response to juveniles that are involved in incidents where they may have witnessed violence, and that's our Handle with Care program. That's an initiative between the police department, actually all law enforcement in Troop County, but with spearheaded police department at the recommendation of Judge Key, where we're in contact with individuals either through domestics or aggravated assaults or some sort of disorder going on in the home, and there's school-aged children. We identify who those children are, and at 3:00 in the morning, the officer can shoot an email to the superintendent's office that only says Handle with Care, and so they notify, superintendent's office notifies the school, and the school notifies the teacher. So if that child's in school and, say, was up all night and is in the back of the class and dozing off or lays its head down on their arms, and the teacher thinks they're not paying attention, it's a discipline issue. Armed with that information, they can do an intervention as opposed to handling it as a discipline issue. Then, of course, we continue to have success with the car care program, where the parts stores have given us discount coupons, and when we stop someone initially for a traffic violation related to equipment defects, instead of a citation or a written warning, they get the coupon. We still complete the written warning, that's for the purposes of just tracking, so that if they're stopped a month or two later and still haven't fixed it, then we'll get the citation. And then, again, the site and release program, where individuals that, rather than taking them to the county, paying for a booking fee, housing them for a day or two until they go to court, where the court routinely ORs them, releases them on their own recognizance, we're able to bring them to the PD, book them, and then just have them sign the citation and depart. Next is the traffic unit. You see that our traffic crashes have decreased over the last year, probably COVID-related in terms of just a reduction in the number of vehicles that are out there. And then, of course, our accident with the injury, similarly, we see a reduction. We continue to have our part-time bike patrol. Of course, with the inclement weather, you tend to see less of them as opposed to more. Our K9 unit is the next page, located in patrol. Specifically, bring to your attention the number of calls for service, almost 3,800, traffic contacts, over 300, arrests 182, and despite the number of times we have a K9 unit present at any of these incidents, we reflect one dog bite for the year. We also show in 36 incidences, we were requested to go to another jurisdiction to assist. That could be anywhere from the Georgia State Patrol, where somebody hops out of a car, bails after pursuit, and hits a wooded area, or out in the county, or to one of the other jurisdictions in the immediate area, not necessarily just in our county, but in a county that joins us. Code enforcement, and to your point, Councilman Gaskins, you'll note that the last year, we had 608 incidences of enforcement related to litter. But to your point also, what we strive with code enforcement is voluntary compliance, so once we put them on notice, and if it's not addressed, then we follow up with a citation. Of those 3,000, almost 4,000 contacts, as it relates to either an operable vehicle's litter or property maintenance or nuisance issues, of those almost 4,000, we had 13 that would not submit to voluntary compliance, and as a result, were issued a citation to appear in court as it related to the specific violation. Court services, one thing in addition to everything else that they're involved in. I was appointed, I don't know, 15 years ago maybe, as head of a statutory required truancy committee that's made up of disciplines from juvenile court, CASA, the school system, and law enforcement, and part of that is taking and making criminal charges against parents that are not ensuring that their children are attending school. And a part of court services and the warrant unit's responsibility is to hand deliver and serve those notices so that if we take enforcement action, we've got the evidence that they're placed on notice. Last year, we did 82, which is somewhat significant considering the challenges we've had, you know, with the whole attendance issue as it relates to schools being opened and virtual versus in-person. Next is the training section, page 10. Post, peace officer standard and training requires 20 hours a year. Our officers receive a minimum of 80 hours a year. Last year, we had over 16,000 training hours for our officers, and in addition to all the variety of issues they're trained on, we continue to emphasize our crisis intervention training and dealing with those affected by mental illness. That's still a source of frustration. I can give you quickly one example. Recently, it came to my attention, in the last three years, we have dealt with the same individual 70 times, 70 times, where they were either taken into custody, taken to jail, or taken to the hospital, or because they didn't commit a crime, but were merely at least acting in a way that brought concern to others, we had to respond. And what's particularly concerning is that we know in Georgia, as around the nation, 25% of those individuals that we fatally shoot are affected by mental illness, and so these incidences continue to be a predictable surprise as it relates to use of force. I'm hopeful that we'll see some legislation and some additional resources that'll help us address that in the future. Next is our school resource officers, who continue to operate in middle school and the two high schools. Eric Vaughn is our new lead officer. Unfortunately, because of COVID, that program has been parked until things get back to whatever the new normal is. Criminal investigation section, we've got four state-certified crime scene technicians. In addition to the general and specific units, we have the special victims unit that handles elder abuse, child abuse, domestic violence. In addition to those responsibilities, we also are participating in the Child Death Review Committee, the Child Abuse Team Review Committee, Crime Stoppers, Juvenile Court Stakeholders, Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, and then also the Truancy Committee. Our analyst continues to be involved in those areas that help us predict where we need to initiate special details or surveillance, and as a result of that, we've seen some successes in addressing frequently some of the crimes that you all have called me about, where, you know, neighborhoods have had some experiences. where, you know, neighborhoods have had some experiences. Next, page 13, our Part One Crimes. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this because we talked about it at the last council meeting, but I do want to highlight a couple of things. If you look, the last time that we had seven homicides in 1997, the total violent crime was 179. In 2020, and we've had about a 20% increase in population, our violent crime was 130. So still despite what has been an upward trend, significantly less than what we saw in the 90s and even in the mid 2000s. Likewise, as it relates to property crime, 2,157 reported property crimes in 97, 1,767, about a 19% decrease, again with a 20% increase in population. The one thing that is concerning, and I asked at the last council meeting, that the council consider some sort of a resolution to share with the Governor and Speaker of the House, is the number of folks that we're arresting that are responsible for violent and property crime. If you look at the bar graph, you'll notice that 61% of the property crimes were individuals on parole, probation or bond. Ones that we repeatedly arrest over and over again. Likewise, 59% of our violent crime, literally, you can cut more than half of your violent crime and more than half of your property crime if the right people are kept in jail. And so I'm hopeful that once we get that information put together, council will consider supporting that resolution. Next is Special Victims Unit. Some troubling numbers there, particularly as it relates to child abuse. The numbers are woefully low. And the single one area that we get, child abuse referrals, is from the schools. And these folks, these young people are not unfortunately in school in a way that allows for the identification and intervention of those kind of cases. We also saw decreases in domestic violence, which runs counter to what some jurisdictions have seen nationally. And likewise with our elder abuse, about half the number of cases. Special Investigations, of course.
Just to clarify that, Chief. So, you know, you can look at these numbers and you can say, oh, great. Domestic violence is down, elder abuse is down, child abuse is down. You don't believe that. You just think that these numbers, that these are issues that are not being reported because of COVID. That's your belief.
Yeah, there's not the opportunity for these instances of abuse to be detected outside the home.
Is there a methodology for the Police Department to look into and try to encourage reporting and so forth? Or find other mechanisms for tracking that? Or not being at the mercy of the self-reporting?
Yeah, we've got a great relationship with DFAC and probably for about 20 years. Anytime that DFAC gets a child abuse, any kind of referral, they give it to us. Anytime we get one, we give it to them. And so that way, you know, we've, they've been dealing with them, say in some sort of a case management system, we have the benefit of that information. Likewise, Harmony House, we do a lethality tool, which every domestic, the officer fills out. And if it hits a certain score, then there's a referral to Harmony House. And even if the victim does not contact them, they reach out to the victim. We've seen a significant reduction in homicides related to domestics over the last probably five or six years. As a result, I think in part of that lethality tool.
And this is another instance where you would encourage people, if they see something, say something. This is one of those cases where it's worth a call to 911. If there is an observed case of domestic violence or child abuse. Because without those reporting systems in place because of COVID, perhaps it's even more important for neighbors and passersby to see things that they would report to you.
That child's going to be just trapped in a very bad and dangerous situation if they have, you know, no one from outside that can at least report so that we can intervene. Then Special Investigations Unit, of course, focus on controlled substances, alcohol violations and gang squad. And then you'll notice the graph that details that. Couple of areas of particular interest is the number of gunshot calls that we're receiving is increasing significantly. 455 this year. We also saw 32 folks shot this year compared to 26 last year. Guns recovered, and that's either stolen guns recovered or guns recovered from folks that are felons and shouldn't have possession of them. 144 this year. We have seen a decrease, and it's not reflected on here, but we have seen a decrease in stolen firearms. Last year, we had 108, excuse me, 2020, we had 108. 2019, we had, 2019, we had 108. 2020, we had 82. Emergency Service Unit handles those things that generally are related to high risk, either high risk search warrants, barricaded subjects. If we have demonstrations, they're particularly involved in crowd control. They participated in the G20 at St. Simon's, at Noonan when they had the protests up there. And anytime that, and we had two this year, where we had information that was going to be a large gathering protest, we have those resources and assets standing by in an area that they can respond quickly, but are not provocative just by, you know, being there and gathering. Record Section responded, 277 substantial open records. 1,834 employment criminal history checks, which again, bodes well for our record restriction process. Because when these, and their employers are running almost 2,000 a year, this can make the difference between them getting a job or not. Community Service, during 2020, there were 1,261 participants for a total of 75, over 7,500 hours at a cost of $54,804. And I'll be happy to respond to any questions.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
You, you had a program where you had a lot of people, they weren't officers, or maybe they were officers in training, riding bikes on the third trail?
Oh, yes, sir. Those are cadets, yes, sir.
Are they still, do you still have that program?
Yeah, they're summer, because usually they're college kids.
Right.
Yeah, so we have them in the summer and then during break. Yes, sir. Matter of fact, we had, we've got one that just tested and we're doing a background on him for a police officer. And we had another that is in the academy right now. So it's become a good local feeder for us for getting locals to stay here in the community and also work at the Police Department.
Good, good.
Chief, I had a question. The issue about the, I guess you call it recidivism, or the people who are released from jail and then commit crimes. Is that controlled a lot by the legislation that requires parole after a certain length of time? I mean, are we barking up the tree on something that's already a state law? Your suggestion about talking to the state leaders?
It's a couple of things. You know, the pendulum, you know, in the 70s, we had, I think I told you last time, the 70s, when crime was just, between the 70s and late 80s, out of control, we hadn't built a new prison in 50 years. And so we went from 275,000 in prison to 2.5 million in prison because we just started building prisons and making a very wide net. And as a result of the wide net, a lot of folks that probably didn't need to be in prison or didn't need to be in that long ended up. And now you see the backlash where second verse same as the first, where we're going to go back to community based corrections. Which sounds good if you've got, you know, parole and probation with adequate supervision and resources to keep up with these folks. But I can tell you, more times than not, when we reach out to community supervision looking for somebody and we go to the place that's listed and they're, they're not there, haven't been there. So they're having difficulties keeping up because of caseload. The Parole Board has a lot of discretion. And we're seeing folks that are getting sentences for 10, 15 years that are being released after three years. And I'm convinced it's not merit based. I don't know what the metrics is or why, but it certainly is not based on their history, not based on their danger to the community, not based on involvement in self improvement activities that would give you some confidence that they're not going to reoffend. Not when, you know, as I shared with you last time, you got, somebody's got 32 cycles. I mean, so there's a lot of discretion inherent in the system. It's not necessarily statutorily controlled. It's controlled by judgments made. And nobody's, you know, being mean or ugly. It's, they've got all these competing interests and pressures and they're responding. And they just, I think, need to hear from folks that are in a position to get this kind of information that you may want to reevaluate your metrics.
Is the parole controlled locally or state?
No, it's individuals appointed by the Governor, I think, for eight year terms. And I think there's five members.
That sounds right.
Yeah, I think there's five members. And they get, you know, they get like, I've had a couple of friends that have been on the parole board and they get a stack of somewhere between 30 and 60 folks a week. And they've got to read those files and then make a decision that's life altering for them, whether they get parole or not. And so, yeah, it's a job I would not want to have. But I feel like the impact that we're seeing as it relates to these crimes of violence with the individuals that have been, with a history of recidivism, parole board needs to hear, I think, from local communities.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't hear you, Chief, being, being critical of the fact that the parole board has these competing pressures and some of that. And the judges do, they have to wait.
Everybody does.
Everybody has competing pressures. What I, what I hear is that probably there need to be more resources deployed to triage the cases to determine who really is likely to reoffend, who really has a, you know, has a likelihood of committing violent crimes and repetition versus those that have learned their lesson and are ready to go back and be productive members of society. And so that is a much easier thing to say than do. And so it does require tremendous amount of resources to be deployed, both on the evaluation and then the monitoring and tracking and follow up side. And so what I actually heard, what I heard, what I heard from the Chief's resolution is not really so much an idea of changing the standard. I think Governor Deal always said the standard was, you've got to decide, is this somebody we're mad at or somebody we're afraid of? If it's somebody you're mad at, you can slap them on the wrist, you can teach them a lesson, you can let them go back out on the street. If we're afraid of them, that's another, that's another story. That was always Governor Deal's standard, which is easy to say and hard to do, incredibly hard to do, to make that evaluation. So what I think the state probably needs to do is to deploy more resources to having the staff and the, both the evaluation and the tracking staff to make sure that they are making the right decision. Because Chief's evidence would suggest perhaps they're not always making the right decision about, about who to release and how to monitor and follow up. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair. And, you know, I think David, the fellow that was a trustee that did almost 20 years for robbery. I mean, he's a walking example of, you know, you're not the same at 18 as you are at 38. I mean, he's a great employee that we've got. So, no, I don't think we need to, you know, we don't have to be one extreme of the other, but we need to find the middle ground and an underlying pinning principle needs to be the safety of the community.
Yeah. Any other questions for the Chief or comments?
One comment. I don't know if it's COVID, but you will breathe.
Well, you used a lot of pictures.
Thank you, Chief, for all that you do for the PD. Thank you for your leadership. And we continue to value you and all of the men and women that work in, work under you in uniform. They're doing a great job. And we're, Council and I and staff, I know, are delighted to continue to be able to support them.
And thank you, and thank you for the support that you all, you know, we never come here and ask for something that we don't get the support. And all of our troops know that and they appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And we go back to those Board of Planning and Zoning Public Hearings that you called. Legal Counsel is recommending that we call those public hearings for March the 9th.
Okay. So.
We've had an opportunity to look at the ordinance now and it actually spells out that once you get the report from the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals, then you call for the public hearing and then just nip that question in the bud without making us wait another two weeks to determine a new schedule.
I'm perfectly fine with that. So just for the, for purposes of the minutes, what, I mean, we passed the motion to call for public hearing. Do you want us to amend that motion? Or do you want to have a new motion to call for public hearing? How do you, how do you mechanically want us to do that?
I think in your discretion as Chair, either one of the two, we'll make it work in a minute.
Okay, so for purposes of the minutes, I think we would want to, I guess, do we have, do we, I guess, let's have a motion to reconsider. Is that, is that the, right? So, so what I would, on the advice of Legal Counsel, I would request that we have a motion to reconsider the items 8B and 8C, where we called for a public hearing.
Motion to reconsider?
Have a motion and a second to reconsider any discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. So now, what I will do, having reconsidered those, is we will first consider the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals' Recommendation on Request to Rezone 507 Jenkins Street from R2 to OIR. And I think it would be appropriate to have a motion to call for a public hearing on March the 9th.
Move for public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to call for a public hearing on March the 9th. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. And then we will reconsider the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals' Recommendation on a Request to Rezone 508 Greenville Street from C1 to C3 with R3 usage in conjunction with a special use permit. And the action item would be a motion to call for public hearing on March the 9th.
Move for public hearing on March the 9th.
Have a motion and a second to call for public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay. Ms. Sue, I, uh, uh-oh. I thought that was Chief. I thought, I thought there was a, it was a higher power calling, right? So we'll work on that, how we want to get with, on the, on the minutes. But I think that, I think that makes sense. Okay. So we have finished the City Manager Report, is that correct, Ms. Kelsey?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. I have a resolution authorizing the Mayor and Clerk to execute a second amendment to the Intergovernmental Contract Regarding Conveyance of Industrial Property Adjacent to Upper Big Springs Road.
Uh, yes, sir. This is just, I was just going to explain just real quickly.
Listen, I've got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion. Now, Ms. Kelsey, yeah?
I was just going to say, as we discussed in a work session this morning, this just moves the sell date out from mid February to mid May.
Okay. And so I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay, and now we're on to ordinances. And we have the first reading of an ordinance rezoning property located at 111 and 115 Fort Drive from R3 Residential to C3 General Commercial.
An ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Lagrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the used zone of real estate located at 111 and 115 Fort Drive and owned by Darkin Lynn Murphy to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
It's the first reading. Yep. So on, we'll move on to second readings. And we have an ordinance modifying the durational requirements for transient merchants.
An ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Lagrange to amend the code of the city to modify the durational requirements for transient merchants selling produce to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay, Ms. Van Schor, would you like to close us?
Yes, sir. And I'd like to echo what Councilman Gaskin said. The good news for tonight, we had a wonderful turnout on Saturday for our monthly litter cleanup. We had Councilmember Gaskin, Mayor Thornton, Mayor Pro Tim Gore. And about 60 people participated and collected about 2,100 pounds of trash and dozens of tires. And we partnered with Chattahoochee Riverkeeper for this litter cleanup. And we helped to clean out Dixie Creek, which we installed a, or the Chattahoochee Riverkeeper installed a trash trap. a trash trap in Dixie Creek, which is the main tributary of West Point Lake. And this trash trap was installed thanks to the city of La Grange's support of the Chattahoochee Riverkeeper. And we're also excited for next month to partner with Calhounet Neighborhood Park Association and the Chamber of Commerce's Leadership Troop Class. We're going to be there cleaning up at the Calhounet Park Saturday, March 6. We expect a very big turnout for that one as well, as we get into the warmer months. And we also wanted to follow back up, the mayor and council requested a video of Tribe of Jima, and so our staff went out, and they do a wonderful job, and they have a video that we would like to show you about their efforts. And we've actually had people contact us to see how to get in touch with Tribe of Jima, so we're very excited that we're getting some momentum with this. And we have not released this yet, so you'll be able to see it first. Here we go.
World, come live.
Tribe means a village. As an old saying takes a village to raise a child. Jima is an African Kwanzaa word that says, my brother's problem is my problem, and we solve it responsibly together. That's what Tribe of Jima means.
Our goal is to keep the community clean and beautiful, give employment to people who need it. I know a good number of homeless people. I eat with them, I go to church with them, I socialize with them, so I know they're here. And I decided to get them to help me, and I pay them.
I feel like we're making an impact. We're giving people that's homeless some money to put in their pocket, to get a room, get some food. We want to get this bigger, we want to make it bigger. And so we're trying to make it a movement. We're trying to inspire our community, trying to get by inspiration, we're trying to let our community know, if we don't care about our community, no one else will care about our community. So we're trying to be an example. We're trying to teach from the work that we're showing people, that we're out here in the cold, whatever weather it is, we're going to be out here doing this. I think that this can be bigger. I think that this could change lives, I think that this could get people out of their economic situation. We want this to be an opportunity for all those in different situations of life, so I think that this is big.
There's a lot of trash, mainly in the lower-income area, and it needs to get off our streets. We just need to clean it up.
When you throw the trash out, you're throwing a child out. Every piece of trash that we throw out, we're giving up on the future generation, because you only emulate how you feel, and if we feel like trash, the next generation is going to be trash.
I think it's doing a great job for the community. We're trying to educate people, as well as we clean up, we also go around telling the people to keep their own areas clean as well. Help us to help you is the goal.
When you litter in your community, it reflects on your mindset of what you're thinking and how you feel about yourself. So I want people to feel good about themselves. So if you feel good about yourself, you will be doing what we're doing, picking up the trash in your yard, picking up the trash that's in your community. You might have a beautiful house, but surrounding is nothing but trash. That brings down your property value. Get out there, pick up the trash, inspire somebody to do it, let's give motivation, let's give inspiration to people, and that's what we're trying to do. Tribe of Jima!
Well, that's great, hey, yeah. That is, that's great, that's great, and I certainly, I know that all the council would agree with me how much we appreciate Zo, and Pam, and Chris, and all of the, all of the members of the group that were picking up the trash and that. It's certainly great to see, I guess, that we've been, we've been at this a couple of years now, trying to get this word out, and they have taken it, and really taken it to another level of active, activity in the community, and so certainly that's a model that I think it would be great to see emulated all around, and appreciate you and your staff helping to feature that, and helping to give some, help spread that word. We stand adjourned.